If you're in one of those huge conversations, if y'all would mind, take it outside. We'd appreciate it. Okay, we're going to item one now into first reading. Consideration of ordinance to amend official municipal code of the city of Jackson, Title 15, Chapter 12, Registration of Vehicles. Mr. LeFune.
So moved.
He cannot do that.
Second.
They're staying there.
Is that it? Mayor, you want me to explain?
Uh, briefly.
Okay, very briefly. You previously passed a resolution that you adopted and the county adopted a similar one where Fred Birmingham, the county clerk's office, will take care of all of our city stickers. This year, we collected about a million one hundred and fifty thousand. Potentially, we have, according to Fred, sixty thousand vehicles, give or take, in the city. So, in a perfect world, we should be collecting like a million fives. We're gonna make this a mandate where people cannot just walk out of Fred's office and say, "I'm gonna go across the street and pay," and unfortunately, they don't. So, they will be mandated, and they will not be getting their stickers unless they're a resident of the city, unless they buy a city sticker.
Okay, thank you, Al. Is there a... Let's have a motion. We've gotta have a public hearing. Let's have a motion and a second, continue discussion.
I think Ernest's motion.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
We already... Already have... Oh, that was the one before we... Okay, alright. Okay, well, we'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on this matter, either in support of or in opposition to, in support of this ordinance on first reading. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second, a discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, under second read, consideration of the ordinance to the rezoned property located at 623-635 O'owa Road, RS Single Family Residential District to O Office District containing 2.60 acres, more or less submitted by Milton Craven and Ray Davis.
Move for approval.
Second. A motion for approval, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, counsel, this is where we're gonna move the first item, new business, up before item two, which is consideration of ordinance. So, let's go ahead and handle the first item, the approval of an agreement between Madison County, Tennessee, and the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and the Jackson-Madison County School System regarding allocation of local option sales tax revenues to fund the Jackson-Madison County School System. Counsel has a copy of that resolution passed by the county commission, and I think last night it received approval from the school board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We ask that item five, under the agreement, be deleted with respect to all these city school property diverting to the county. At this present time, Lane College is... has a memorandum of understanding signed with the Jackson-Madison County School System to use portions of Jackson Central Mary. We ask that item five be deleted from the...
Okay, we have... Okay, item five to be deleted in its entirety from the agreement?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
No, we've already got a motion. Say, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Now, we had a motion.
You're gonna have to...
We have a motion and a second on the... We need a motion and a second on the agreement.
On the agreement.
Then, do we have... Okay, we have it at the second. Now then, we get to address the amendment.
Right.
Y'all know the amendment. Is there a motion that we approve the amendment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment. Okay. Counsel, please vote.
But wait, wait, before we vote, can I ask a question?
Sorry, man.
If we change this agreement, will it not have to go back before the county?
It'll have to be... It'll have to be go back as an amended agreement. I think they'll have sufficient time to approve the agreement prior to the adoption of their budget.
So, is anybody... Do we have any indication from them whether they're okay with this, or...
Pardon?
Yes, we do.
And to be clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, councilman, the city will deliver title then to the Jackson-Madison County School System, correct?
No, we're not gonna deliver title to anyone if Councilman Buchanan's amendment passes. The situation will remain the same as it is today. Louis, you wanna handle that?
The discussion that we had six months ago, Attorney Carter.
The city's relationship to this property is not a traditional ownership relationship. The consolidation plan had the city giving custody of the property to the school system, and the school systems can use it as long as they want to, and when it's tired and worn out, they can give it back. Okay? So, if we transfer, all we have left to transfer is kind of a trustee relationship and maybe a janitorial relationship.
I understand.
And I will tell the council, this was part of the city's initial condition from this agreement, simply because, counsel, remember where the city had to allocate roughly a quarter million dollars to demolish the elementary school at West Jackson, Dedrick Street, and we just didn't wanna get into that scenario again. But I understand the position of Lane College and others who would still like to pursue ownership and at least a lease arrangement with the Jackson Central Mary facility. And then, the footprint would also include, I think, at this point, Madison.
Correct.
So, I understand that footprint, so I, you know, I have no issue with it, and I think...
As far as legally, the county has approved a settlement agreement. Ours would be considered a counteroffer, which impliedly rejects their offer, and the negotiation would be whether or not that revision is acceptable. So, that's where we are legally.
Right, right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to... on the amendment, to the motion.
Could we not just include that one piece of property and not the rest of them?
Well, you get into cherry picking, and I doubt if that's going to, you know, be well-received as far as taking the best and the worst and the medium and apples and oranges, that type thing.
And we don't think that the county would honor the agreement that we got with Lane so far, or were concerned about that?
Well, we don't know. We don't know. That was some... a little discomfort, I think, on behalf of some people that would like to go ahead and pursue the acquisition and continue the lease arrangement with the school system as far as Jackson Central Mary campus. There's also a group working on it, but been working for at least two years to obtain a major foundation grant to totally... for reuse of the Jackson Central Mary campus, and that's in the amount of... last number I saw was five million dollars. No assurance that that will be approved, that that is... a lot of time and effort and work has gone into that foundation grant. So, I think...
I guess the other question is, is this wouldn't prevent us, once we find out exactly how this is all gonna fall in place, for us to come back with an agreement for the rest of the properties going down the road somewhere? If we wanted to...
I don't think anything would be prohibited, you know, and we can always come back with something, but we'll have a... if counsel approves the amendment, it goes back to the county as amended agreement, and if they're in agreement, then we have the agreement sealed. This particular agreement, anyway. Any other questions on the amendment? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We do.
Okay. Discussion, counsel? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor and one voting no.
Okay, also, that was the amendment. Now, we have to come back and vote on the motion as amended? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion from counsel?
Yes. Is it okay?
Yes.
I know I talked to counsel about this money that we are giving back to the county. No, we can't make a suggestion or tell them how to spend their money, but I think it was brought to our attention that we took twelve million dollars from this education, and I would like to make a suggestion as a taxpayer, you know, that they take the six million dollars that we're giving to them to use towards capital. I just wanna go on record saying that because they basically saying we took money from education. They're gonna take the money and put it in their general funds, from my understanding, but I think they should take it to use towards capital and to make sure that money is used just directly for schools, because, I mean, we was attacked that we took money from the school system, and we giving back money, but I wanna make sure that money is in good use because right now, there are a hundred and forty-three million dollars in the hole for us maintenance in the schools, and capital, I think, is running fifty thousand dollars or more. But I know we can't make that suggestion, but I wanna go on record suggesting that as a taxpayer, that they use that money as capital. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or counsel? We have a motion and a second to approve the amended motion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, consider... Item two is consideration of an ordinance, 2017, 2018 fiscal year operating and capital budget. This is a budget on second reading.
Mayor, counsel, I'm gonna try and go through this in short manner, but you can interrupt me at any point in time. But we did have a hundred and twelve changes between the June 20 meeting, which was passed on an ordinance that would've given us a two-point-five million dollar deficit. But at that time, and now, I'll come back to this, but the agenda, the ordinance that we have now gives us a one-point-five-four-one-oh-twenty-six-point-four-four revenue over expense, a complete flip-flop. And I'm not gonna go through unless you ask me to all the hundred and twelve changes, but I do wanna highlight some in specific. At the June 20 meeting, unofficially, I put up a change sheet that Ms. Bell had kept up to that point, and that showed five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars decrease in expense, which brought that two-point-five down to one-point-nine. Then, we went into a great deal of further review and discussion, but it can be simplified in a number of ways. Like, here's stormwater, and all we were doing was redistributing the expense material that was in expense and putting it into different categories. And number one, Jackson Civic Plan, we had a carryover there of a hundred and seventeen thousand. The big hit was correcting the benefits calculation on the police budget of four-hundred-and-forty-thousand. Not the police's fault at all. We just had to come back and review our benefits calculation, and that changed that. So, that basically wiped out that five-hundred thousand. We take the four-hundred thousand and the one-hundred thousand carryover, and then you start looking at numerous police items that were changed, and again, not for the purpose of increase, but just for the purpose of getting them in the right categories, and the police did a wonderful job on their budget. And as I showed you on the front sheet, even with all of those changes, the police are... police are point-five-five below last year's budget. So, I don't personally have a problem or a reason to go through all of these, but I will if you want to.
I think counsel has a copy of those. If there's any item in there for second reading that counsel wants to bring forward to Al, feel free to do so. And then, I need to call on Councilman Wallace, who headed up our budget committee for any additional information for the council. Councilman Wallace, recommend.
Thank you, mayor. The Budget Review Committee asked me to make a report to the council on some of the decisions that we made, recommendations that we had, and I've got all of them but one here that I wanna discuss. One of the recommendations we did have was on the city stickers, to get that additional revenue, which is the two-hundred thousand, probably more, that we'll raise because of doing that from the meetings that we had. On the budget itself, the committee was hesitant to recommend a budget that was actually be a draw on fund balance, which is what we actually approved at the last meeting, and they didn't actually come to the point of recommending approving that because they did not like the idea of spending more money that we're taking in, but they knew that we had the sales tax that we've been donating to the schools, and that issue would hopefully would alleviate that problem, and it looks like it's going to, so we're happy about that. And I think that probably the budget that we've got today to approve, they would be... we'd probably recommend approving that. I can't speak for them for sure, but I think they'd be happy about that. One thing that was pointed out is we've got overage this year. We're actually gonna have more money taken in than we're spending, and they wanted... they expressed some concern about how that money gets spent and not letting it just stay in the general budget, and all of a sudden, it just all gets spent away. So, they would like to really have some kind of a rationale behind how we spend that, possibly going to the debt service or capital outlay, one of the two, but that would be something that we could look at on down the road. The other recommendations they had is for the recommendations, they had a recommendation that the One Jackson Action Committee continue to proceed with doing a study on implementing a stormwater tilting fee, with the subject study be completed no later than December 31st, 2017, and presented to City Council no later than January 2018 at the City Council meeting. I have discussed this with Stan, I think, probably in the next meeting or two. The One Jackson Action Committee will follow up on that, and will bring some type of proposal before to the city, kind of what they think we can do on that. So, that... we'll look at that later. The next one was recommendations to the city... I think you've all got a copy of this in your pockets, too.
Yes.
Recommendation to City Council, ask the mayor to appoint a committee to investigate the creation and implement of a prepared food tax for the city of Jackson. We felt like a prepared food tax would be a possibly additional source of revenue. What we're looking at, we know we've got a budget for the current year, where we've got more revenues coming in, we've got expenditures, but we're looking at on down the road for the future of the city, particularly with our debt service and our capital outlay project we've got on land. So, we recommended we did continue to look into that. Recommend to City Council for the mayor to appoint a new budget review committee immediately to begin working on the city's 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget. We started in January, and still by July, we're still had questions and concerns, so we kinda felt that that would be a good committee to have up and running for another year or two, at least, till we can kinda get our budget, our finances, in order. The last one was recommend to City Council approve the mayor to direct city attorney Louis Cobb about looking at transferring the school buildings to the... and of course, that was in the agreement that we had, so we kinda had that one solved, but then we pulled it back out, so that probably would be, you know, back on the burner again to look at, depending on what happens with the property that we, you know, that Lane may wanna use, what happens to the rest of that property, so that we won't have a problem with, you know, who owns the property. You know, we kinda felt like that the schools is a county responsibility, so they should own all the property for the schools, too, without the city being involved in that. So, those recommendations that were made from the council. The last one we'll bring for you at the next meeting. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Any...
Mayor, just to pick up and go from there, and so we have a continuity here. I said that I didn't really think we needed to discuss the changes, the finite changes in the police department, but we do need to note that the total changes in the expense are up a million nine eighty-one, but it's primarily right here in these three, which are part of the agreement with the county, where we're paying off the mixed string tax in total, probably around March or April of next year, and we're also paying off some shortages, shark balls from 2015 on our payments in support of the EMA and library. So, that's the expense portion. Then, the capital, most of that, as you see, is gonna be carryforwards, and it's hard to get carryforwards exactly right. There'll probably be some legitimate amendments as we go, but right now, capital did show an increase of three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, and it's primarily, as I said, carryovers. We took out... now, we're gonna address revenue. We took out the two-point-five-million-dollar shortfall that we had shown as a draw on fund balance, and we put in the agreement that you just approved with an amendment to show that six million share of local option sales tax. So, we pick up three-point-five-million dollars in increased revenue versus that one-point-nine-million dollars in increased expense. Down here, in the total revenues, you can see that we have a transfer from the general fund to the debt service because that's our vehicle for paying off the mixed string pay. So, the debt service actually gets that money from the sales tax that comes in, in the general fund, so that's really a wash. And we end up with what I started out with. I'm going too fast, stop me. But basically, we have put together a budget right now with a one-million-five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-oh-twenty-six-four-four revenue over expense. It takes into consideration these hundred and twelve changes, and basically, we are ending up... I'll comment once more, the reason this fourteen percent is here, that's the vehicle for transferring the monies to debt service to pay off the mixed string tax. Otherwise, that would be a much more reasonable number. And all the other numbers are within the realm of reality. Any other questions going from the 620 first reading to this meeting on 7/11?
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the budget ordinance on second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion from counsel.
I have one quick question, and maybe my memory just lapsed, but on the first ordinance, we got expenditures for recreation at one-point-three million, and the amended budget for FY17 at one-point-three million, and we go over here to this new ordinance, and it's three-point-eight and three-point-seven.
I'm trying to follow you here on recreation.
Recreation, yeah, right. On right now, we have, on this ordinance that we have in front of us for today, FY17 is three-point-eight million, and FY18 is three-point-seven. On the ordinance from our last meeting, it was one-point-three and one-point-three.
We had, and Tony can comment on this more, but on the first reading, we had shown groundskeeping and maintenance.
That's right.
Moved up. Now, we've moved it back to Tony. That's...
See, I knew my memory just lapsed.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Excuse me, mayor, if I may, just very quickly, I would just like to commend Councilman Wallace as chair of the Budget Review Committee for his leadership. I also would like to thank Councilman Conger for his service. We dealt with some very, very challenging issues, and I believe that we came out favorable to the city, so again, just wanna thank them for their service, as well as thank you, mayor, for your leadership in forming that committee, and I think that is such a precedent for the city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next thing, mayor, that we need to address is the...
Have the ordinance set the tax rate.
Tax rate.
Right.
Right.
Before you do that, Al...
That ought to be pretty simple.
If I could follow up on, I appreciate Ernest's help on that committee also, and our two non-council persons, Dennis Henderson, Jimmy Exum, and they both said they never wanna serve on the committee for the city the rest of their lives. So, it was a hard committee to be on. But anyway, we appreciate their service also.
And I was gonna tease Councilman Wallace. I believe A Star is Born, he's been on television so much over the last several months.
I never wanna be on that committee again.
And by virtue of being the treasurer of this council, he is also chair of next year's budget committee.
I don't think so. We'll see.
Oh, yes.
We'll discuss that.
There you go.
Prodigal. Okay, we have a... Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a second for set the tax rate. Discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies. Item two is election of vice mayor. One year term.
Mr. Chairman, in light of our current vice mayor being absent today, I would like to nominate Ernest Brooks as our next vice mayor of the city of Jackson.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Motion, nomination be closed.
Yeah, and I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion, got a second to that?
Second.
Congratulations, Councilman Brooks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is consideration of resolution to approve the Jackson Housing Authority's community development budget, 2017, 2018. You still living? There you are. All right.
Trooper, for sure.
Okay, what we have this afternoon is our annual action plan 2017, 2018, which represents the third year of our five-year consolidated plan. Normally, we would present this plan to you in April or May, however, HUD directed us this year to not submit the plan until we received our actual allocations, which we just received in June. So, we have until... we have until August the 16th to get the plan in. We did present the plan to the Jackson Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners at their June meeting, and they did pass a resolution to approve. This year, we only have two funding sources, the Community Development Block Grant and Home Grant. You may or may not recall me telling you last year that THDA was looking at eliminating small-city set-asides for the Emergency Solutions Homeless Grant, and they did that this year and made the funding competitive, so our nonprofits applied directly with them, and they all were awarded those funds, so those funds do stay in the community. Just... we're just not a pass-through agency anymore. On the Community Development Block Grant, we were allocated five-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-nine dollars, which is approximately a ten-thousand-dollar increase from last year. On the Home Funds, we received two-hundred-nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-nine dollars, which is about a seven-thousand-dollar increase from last year. On the CDPG funds, we're budgeting, and you all have the budget, so I'll be brief with that, but we budgeted twenty percent for administration, up to twenty-five percent for our public service activities, such as Boys and Girls Club, Southwest Human Resource Agencies, WIA at-Risk Youth Program, the RIFUS Snack Backpack Program, and, excuse me, Western Tennessee Legal Services Fair Housing Program. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand of that, five-hundred-nine-thousand is for the repayment of the Section 108 loan, which represents almost half of the funding. And then, the balance is for our housing rehabilitation activities, which is about eighty-seven-thousand dollars. Home Funds...
I'm sorry, do you remember the balance on that loan?
I don't. I have it at the office. I can get it.
Okay.
On the Home Funds, we budgeted ten percent for administration, a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for our community housing development organizations, which is Joan Affordable Housing and Southwest CDC for their acquisition and rehab activities, and the remaining balance will be for target rehabilitation, which is about seventy-seven-thousand dollars. Any questions?
Have any questions of...
Well, Mr. Chairman, this place, and I'm so happy we received the allocation. I was a little worried.
So am I.
But what major programs, or what programs do you have, and what areas set up for the rehab? And I know that the... what is out now, THDA?
THDA, that's homeless, yes. That wasn't for housing. That was for shelter, for homeless.
For the housing programs for the rehab and the new housing?
Right, we do have...
What areas are you planning, or you gonna have a public hearing, or what are we gonna do?
We had the public hearing in April to present the draft plan, mm-hmm, and a thirty-day comment period as well. But for the housing, we still have the minor repair program, that's the CDPG funds of about eighty-eight thou... well, JCL, Jackson Center for Independent Living is included in that.
What can citizens do to apply? Do they come to the office, or...
Yes, they can come to the office or call me, but we do have a waiting list because of the funding being so minimal, you know, that we're working with, so I just kinda work down that list, but they can call me and get on the list or come by.
I have some referrals for you.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Okay, any other questions for the budget? Okay, is there a motion that we approve the Community Development Budget, Jackson Housing Authority?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is not on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. I think today is Councilman Bray's... Councilman Bray's birthday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Today? Tomorrow, okay.
He'd be thirty-nine, Jack Benny.
Right, right. Consideration of a contract, consulting contract with Taylor &amp; Sons Risk Management Department? What is it? Deboca grant, I'm sorry. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, now, we're down to consulting contract.
Okay, for the past eight to ten years, Keith Patterson has assisted our Risk Management Department with claims of...
Department with claims assistance, plans compliance. He provides reports, he attends committee meetings, and helps that department out whenever they need him. And they would like to continue the contract with him for another year.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Consideration of contract with Arrow Paving Company for coal mix, lowest would be in the best bid.
Coal mix is what we use to put in potholes in the cooler months, and the lowest and best bid is Arrow Paving. Delivered cost per ton, eighty-four dollars.
Motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Motion made, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is consideration of contract for traffic signal updates.
We bid out this traffic signal upgrade project, and Jack Hornsby Electric, who's in Jackson, was the lowest and best bid at one-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. And if you would like Scott Con, uh, not Scott Con, I'm sorry, Scott Chandler to tell you what this project is about.
May I answer any questions for you on that?
Yeah, is it on there? You give me.
Move for approval.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval, there's a second.
Second.
Discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item eight is consideration of contract for traveling road improvements.
Ford Construction Company of Jackson was the lowest and best bidder at five-hundred-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, and we would ask that you approve this based upon unit pricing.
Move for approval.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is consideration of contract for demolition of Venus Mill.
Finally, we got the proposals in for the demolition of the mill, and when we started out, the low bid was six-hundred-nineteen thousand dollars. And the mayor told me that was too much money, so I went back to everybody and negotiated with them. We have one proposal from a company in Georgia. Their name is Midland Communications for one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. The problem is, I don't have their bonds or their state contractor's license yet. So, instead of holding this up for another month, I would like for you to approve the award of the contract to this company, pending the receipt of his bonds and his insurance. If he does not get that to me in ten days, I would like for you to also approve the contract with the next low bidder, who is Bob Howell Construction. His cost is two-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars. We can get his bonds and insurance.
Counsel, understand what, what we have going on there. Okay, very good.
Ten, ten days too short of the time. I hate to spend that much more money if we're, you know, just.
Ten days is, is a very lenient amount of time to get somebody to get their insurance and their bonds in. Insurance sometimes just takes thirty minutes, bonds.
Well, I guess I was saying, if the, you know, the individual needs to get is on vacation or something, and it gets bad.
He's not on vacation.
Okay. He already tracked him down.
We've tracked him down. We've talked to him. We've got emails.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Second. Discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item ten is consideration of contract for uniforms for the fire department.
We would like for you to approve a contract with a uniform source. This is a local company that we have found. They, they have been servicing the fire department for maybe eight or nine months. We wanted to see if, if we could work with them, if they could work with us. They have their uniforms already in stock at this place. And all the firemen do is go out there, pick their size, go back to work. Unlike when we had contracts in Memphis and Nashville, they would ship the, the uniforms. Sometimes they wouldn't fit, they'd have to take them to a tailor. We've tried everything. So far, this contract is, is awesome. It's a local company, and their prices are better than what we had been paying in Memphis and Nashville.
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, probably a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And your last item is item eleven, consideration of contract for stone.
All sorts of stone.
Or rock.
All sorts of stone and rock. And this will be delivered pricing. Tenant contractors is the lowest and best bid at delivered pricing.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item, thank you, Ms. White. Item twelve, board appointments. These, they're all members and recommended for Industrial Development Board, Mary Jane McQuirter, Lyndon Preston, Stephen Eldridge, reappointment, Ray Washington, reappointment, Brad Little, a reappointment. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Library Board of Trustees, Greg Jordan, for reappointment.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And Health Education Housing Facilities, reappointment of Helen Owen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And under CDC, Jane Alderson, there's a reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item twelve, the budget amendments.
You have three before you today. The first one is for the Jackson Madison County Library that is in need of a HVA C replacement in the amount of ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty dollars, of which thirty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty will be reimbursed by the county.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, probably a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you today is a year-end amendment prepared by Mr. Sam Dawson for departments that are anticipated to go over budget in the amount of a million eighteen-five-hundred-and-ten dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Need a second, council?
Second.
I need a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six member in favor and one voting no.
The third amendment that you have before you today is for the sportsplex, where the bonus amount budgeted in COLA was not sufficient for the FY seventeen approved budget in the amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay, we have a, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item thirteen, invoice is over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Meeting is adjourned.